Mr. Canales, if you can call, roll please.
Ms. Caracella. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Present.
Mr. Hayward.
Here.
Ms. Parlamis. Ms. Rendell. Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Calvez.
Here.
Dr. Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session for matters of attorney-client privilege only. It should be about 10 minutes. We'll just step out and then come back. I saw Mr. Cohen, not for the, like, we will, there's a lot of you, so we will step out and come back. Mr. Cohen, and then seconded by Mr. Corey. All right, all those in favor? All right, any opposed? I don't hear any. Okay. Oh, can I have a motion to recess, close session? Mr. Corey, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. All right. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Okay, none. All right. So we are back in public session. So thank you, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Charleston, for coming to talk with us for our annual conference. I would just like to make a statement because typically this is not something that would be done in a public session. I think that ultimately, when you have any kind of employee evaluation process, it's really one of those things that's a high-fidelity type of thing that you would be able to encourage, you know, open dialogue between two people, or like, for instance, a board and a superintendent, by being able to have that kind of conversation without, you know, having it with the public as well. But you have the right to, you know, waive your rights in this situation and have this evaluation occur in public, and that is acknowledged. So the way that this is going to go today, we're going to, you know, review through the performance report. This is not a document that is available to the public to review, so there are going to be sometimes possibly things that you might not have the full context of. But, Dr. Charleston, I will highlight specific items in each of the either the goals or the standards, and then I will talk about the summative, and then it will be open to any of the board members that want to make any comments, and then up to you what you would like to, like, say. So the first element is the district goals. So this would be the second year that on this document, there were no district goals written into the document, and there was consistent comments with regards to the board consensus that there were no goals to evaluate, that it's acknowledged that the goals are publicly listed on the website, but the CSA has chosen not to self-evaluate. There's no supporting documentation on where we are with our multi-tier system of support. The, there's no supporting documentation with regards to the different aspects of social-emotional learning and/or Goal Three. Another comment was disappointed to see no effort applied to this process. As trustees, we are responsible for hiring and evaluating the superintendent, specifically holding them accountable. I'd like no more than to use this exercise to demonstrate support and celebrate success, but with no goals listed and the board president sharing, CSA doesn't care, I'm just left feeling disheartened and disrespected. There would be opportunity for each of these goals to kind of be, like, further discussed or supported. There's, there, this area is blank. Each of the standards, I will just simply state what the standard is and talk about some, highlight some of the comments that were made in the standards. Standard one is mission, vision, and core values. From the ratings of either not observed all the way to exemplary, there is an average of area for growth. Supporting comments are, there's a sense of resignation and tone to all updates. As our district leader, I do not sense excitement for new school initiatives. I've not heard of any of the shared value, shared vision, vision, sorry. For student excellence, little collaboration with the board, communication feels one-sided, conversational exchange feels discouraged, does not share data, informational feels territorial. Board members are on a need-to-know basis of details to learning, goals, plans. However proficient and knowledgeable in school operations. Another is, although some data is shared to inform planning, the superintendent has not consistently engaged the board in meaningful dialogue about how vision, mission, and student-centered goals should guide decision-making, resource allocation, or long-term planning. Collaboration in the development and monitoring of district goals is limited, and the lack of a transparent and inclusive process for reviewing and adjusting those goals has contributed to a growing disconnect between board governance and administrative direction. For this evaluation process, the superintendent didn't enter any comments, provide any supporting documents, or provide a narrative of the accomplishments over the year. A summary was not provided to guide on whether or not the superintendent thinks that the district goals were achieved or if satisfactory progress was made. That said, it was encouraging to see long-tenured teachers recognized and honored at the last board meeting, an important act that reflects the value of institutional knowledge and educator commitment within the district. Without a cohesive and collaborative leadership approach that fosters trust and shared ownership, the effectiveness of long-term planning is compromised. Moving forward, greater effort is needed to engage the board and stakeholders in articulating and advancing a unified vision of excellence for all students, one that aligns beliefs, actions, and outcomes at every level of the district organization. Another comment, again, about the superintendent does so many good things for the student of Glen Rock. I'm not sure why he has a total disregard for this tool and process. Another standard is governance, ethics, and professional norms. This area, we have an average, again, just to explain. There's any, this is compiled just based on all of the, the results of all of the board members, and it kind of just essentially averages out statistically where you end up. So you could have anything from not observed to exemplary, and this is where we have the critical mass as well as the supporting statements. With standard two, as a seasoned superintendent, Brett clearly understands his role and the role of the board. Brett communicates out test results as required by law. Brett does not effectively communicate with the entire board. Brett has trouble creating a culture of mutual respect with the board. Brett does keep us on top of policies and policy regulation updates. While Brett is ethical in his professional conduct, he treats some board members more harshly than others. He does act with cultural competence and address any issues of equity and cultural responsiveness. I again take issue with the fact that Brett did not provide any evidence for this standard. It would have been simple to outline how he handles matters of antisemitism, his relationship with the local rabbi, and more. It is unfortunate that he would not take the time to provide some of the many examples. While they're supporting evidence that you're managing district-aligned board policies, Dr. Charleston does not currently demonstrate a strong collaborative working relationship with the board. The overall relationship with the board reflects a need for growth. While weekly updates and meeting recaps have resumed, they are often filled with condescension. Opportunities for collaboration, transparency, and shared leadership are often missed, and board members continue to express feelings of dismissal or disrespect in interactions, both publicly and privately. And to standard three, operations management. Proficient. Dr. Charleston maintains and manages the budget with the help of the business administrator through long-term planning and effective use of capital reserve. Brett's administration has been able to help the district grow and maintain facilities. This is another area that Brett could have easily provided evidence. It shows a total lack of respect to not take this evaluation seriously. Through the weekly email reports and updates during board meetings, we can observe that there are effective budgeting and accounting practices, and the board is informed on pros and cons of costs. And whenever there is a cost, that there is a thought about the impact of the financial situation or long-term financial planning. For example, when we discuss the long-term AC unit replacement. Standard four, curriculum instruction assessment and school improvement. Overall, proficient. Glen Rock has a truly successful school district. There are areas that need improvement, such as math scores throughout the district. Brett should continue to study the data and determine where best to make changes to improve our program. Evidence. The superintendent has maintained a stable instructional environment that supports overall student success. Curriculum and assessment practices are consistent across grade levels, and students benefit from effective instruction. and students benefit from effective instruction, access to technology, and academic supports. However, middle school math remains an area of concern. Greater emphasis is needed on differentiation, both to support struggling students earlier and to provide more open advancement opportunities for those exceeding grade level expectations. Strengthening intervention and enrichment will be key to equity and achievement. Board members and the community have also expressed interest in understanding the impact of the supervisor model, which has now been in place for several years. An update on its effectiveness and outcomes would support transparency and help guide future instructional improvements." Standard five, community of care, equity, and family engagement. Area for growth. "One example of achieving this goal is now the thriving international travel exchange program with multiple countries established and maintained by Dr. Charleston. These experiences give our students opportunities to expand their perspective, preparing them for the real world. This exposure to new cultures enhances our own school environment and student conduct naturally through understanding and appreciation. These programs allow for full family engagement when the exchange is reciprocated in Glen Rock. The community is engaged and informed during board meetings and HSA meetings. And the superintendent has maintained a safe and caring school environment and continues to support student well-being through consistent student conduct policies and an inclusive approach to school culture. Efforts to promote fairness and cultural awareness are evident in district practices, and students are encouraged to grow into thoughtful, productive members of a diverse society. In the future, it would be good to discuss how we are preparing our students for the real world as our environment is more heavily driven by AI. We would like to ensure that our students are prepared in a rapidly changing world. However, community and parent feedback suggests room for improvement in direct engagement and communication. While information is shared regularly, interactions are often one-directional and do not always foster the kind of open reciprocal relationship that builds trust. A stronger, more visible presence in the community and more compassionate dialogue with families would strengthen these relationships and better align district leadership with community expectations. Overall, the superintendent is proficient with many of the expectations in this domain. Growth is needed to deepen authentic communications with parents and stakeholders and better reflect the values of mutual respect and shared responsibility." Standard six, professional capacity and community of school district personnel, proficient. "The superintendent has made efforts in the air of staff hiring. However, the turnover of assistant principals at both the middle school and high school remains a concern. Consistent, stable leadership is vital to fostering a positive school climate and providing continuity for students, staff, and families. This presents an opportunity for a superintendent to review current hiring and support practices to ensure that new administrators are well-matched for the district and set up for long-term success. The value of supervisors in this district has not been adequately communicated to the Board of Education. It would benefit the board to receive a clear, data-informed analysis of their contributions and the positive changes these roles have brought to the district. Again, no super, no supporting documents have been included for my review. This is not best practice. There's discussion about meeting expectations in core areas of personnel management, recruitment, and valuation, contract administration, policy compliance. The staff are evaluated according to established procedures. Contract recommendations are handled in a timely manner. Professional development is aligned with district goals. However, the board's ability to assess workplace culture remains limited. The superintendent has instructed trustees not to communicate with staff regarding any district matters and to route any board-related communications through his office. While this aligns with certain government, governance norms, the rigidity of this approach, including discouraging informal engagement even as parents, may foster unnecessary distance and concern. It does not inspire confidence that a positive, transparent, and open culture exists behind the scenes. While we sincerely hope that district staff feel supported and safe, the board has little visibility into the climate. Additionally, the recent handling of the girls' basketball coach situation underscores the need for greater sensitivity and care in how personnel matters are managed publicly. Even when leadership decisions differ from community sentiment, it's essential that the process reflects respect, forethought, and a commitment to setting up students, staff, and the broader community for success. In this instance, the manner in which events unfolded in real time did not reflect those values and damaged trust between the administration, the board, and the community. These moments matter, not only for public perception, but for integrity of district leadership. Moving forward, more transparent and inclusive communication around sensitive decisions and clearer channels for feedback will foster a more trusting and collaborative climate among staff, families, and leadership." The next portion is to discuss or summarize the strengths. The three strengths were operations management, curriculum instruction and assessment and school improvement, and professional capacity, community of school, district personnel. Overall, it is noted that Dr. Charleston demonstrates strong operational leadership and financial stewardship. He has consistently managed district resources responsibly, aligning the budget with long-term district needs. And his collaboration with the business administrator has led to effective use of capital reserve funds, maintaining district facilities, and long-range infrastructure planning. There's evidence of support for professional development and broader instructional initiatives. In terms of the six standards, of the six standards that require areas for growth, standard one, two, and five, which are mission, vision, and core values, governance, ethics, and professional norms, as well as community of care, equity, and family engagement. According to board policy, superintendent's contract, the Glen Rock Board of Education has completed its annual evaluation. But this evaluation reflects the collective input of all nine board members and is based on these professional standards. Overall, we, you know, have a summary rating of proficient, indicating that, you know, the, Dr. Charleston, you've met expectation in most of the areas. The strong performance against fiscal responsibility, curriculum instruction, and school improvement, as well as community engagement with the written updates. And thank you for submitting out the written updates or the weeklies to the broader community of the district upon your return. The, and as well as the HSA meetings. There are several areas for continued focus and improvement. And these are aligned about either the superintendent-board relations, collaborations, and professionalism there. So you again bring strong expertise in the rules of governance, goal-setting, and strategic and tactical elements of running a school district. The issue isn't knowledge or the plans that are developed and executed. It's the attitude towards the behavior, sorry, the board and the behavior towards anyone who doesn't treat him as beyond reproach. That dynamic creates unnecessary tension and undermines the collaborative, optimistic spirit we need in order to lead effectively. The most consistent feedback from the evaluation process centers on professional dynamic between the superintendent and the board. The majority of board members expressed concern that communication with the board has at times lacked mutual respect or collaborative tone. Specific behaviors, including remarks perceived as dismissive or unnecessarily adversarial, have affected board cohesion and trust. With regards to the, the hiring process for the, the head coach, just abrupt reversal with no clear explanation or adherence to the stated process created confusion and ultimately a breach of trust. Decisions like this, especially when tied to hiring and community-facing roles, have lasting impacts on credibility and relationships, and this one has proven difficult to repair. The superintendent is expected to actively seek and value input from a range of stakeholders. While there's regular communication on progress, there's not uniting amongst the stakeholders, particularly the board, under a common set of goals and priorities. "Because of how Dr. Charleston engages with the board, we have reason to question how he interacts with administrators and staff. The superintendent is expected to actively seek and value input from a range of stakeholders. While superintendent regularly communicates progress, he does not unite. And collaboration in the development, development and monitoring of district goals is limited. Finally, he was expected to complete the annual evaluation. With his tenure and experience, we expected he would use it as a leadership tool and provide evidence of the success towards district goals. In a year when the superintendent oversaw and supported Hamilton School's achievement of the prestigious 2023 National Blue Ribbon Award, it would have been great for Dr. Charleston to take the time to collate the achievements across the school year. We seek an honest assessment of his performance and a commitment to continuous improvement. The blank page indicates an unwillingness to reflect and does not provide insight into how they think, lead, or plan to improve. Dr. Charleston is a capable and experienced educational leader whose work continues to benefit the students and staff of Glen Rock Public Schools. However, the board believes that the success of the district overall will depend increasingly on his ability to engage constructively with the board as a governance partner. The board recommends that Dr. Charleston prioritize the following in the upcoming year. Engage in respectful and constructive communication with trustees. Foster a collaborative governance model in which the board has meaningful input in setting and assessing district priorities and outcomes. With attention to these areas, the board is confident that the superintendent can continue to lead Glen Rock Public Schools with distinction while strengthening the foundation for long-term governance and strategic alignment." So that concludes just a high level of the actual, you know, hard documentation for the performance report. Ultimately, you know, the things that I would, I would say personally is that there are many elements of, of this evaluation that have had themes in, in prior years. Last year, we didn't have the opportunity to have input as well. Like, much of it was just C-weeklies. So being able to see that, you know, this year, we're not able to really foster a level of communication, you know, bidirectionally, where like, it always feels like, you know, if I'm being honest and personal, that everything is a setup for a litigious discussion. And that kind of setup really just makes it difficult for us to unite as a board, as a district, as members of the community, and center around things that are really what's most important, which is our children. And anything outside of that is honestly a grave distraction when we don't have that, that time. So, you know, I, I will say, I personally am appreciative of the efforts that you've made in doing a variety of things, which, you know, I will always continue to highlight. And, you know, doing what's right and supporting you as a superintendent when things are, you know, there are phenomenal things that happen every single meeting that we have, every conversation that we have, there are phenomenal things that we can discuss. However, it feels at times that you are either on the inside or on the outside. And if you're on the outside of the conversation, then you barely may, you know, get a look. And if you're on the inside, then things are so much more open and collaborative. And a consistent tenet of what I have attempted to do as board president is value the opinions of the members of the board. Yes, you need five, a five out of nine majority in order for issues to progress. But five is not always enough when you have the ability to build some level of consensus that even in the end, if the decision is that the, the, the board is going to go one way or another, then at least everybody feels respected or at least involved in the process. The board votes how the board votes, and consistently, the board votes to uphold the things that come to the table. We have not, to my knowledge, and please correct me if I'm wrong, managed to pass anything that is, that has come to this board with, without that level of majority. So we have been consistently doing our job, even though there are times where it most certainly could be much easier than it is. You know, there, there have been moments where I've asked in the past, you know, like, what is it that I, I can personally do as board president to get better support? For us to be able to, you know, like, what, what do you need from me? How, you know, how can I help? And most of those comments have centered around, you know, like, get better control of the board or get better control of any specific individual. However, I have no ability to control any other adult in this room except for myself. And every year, we're going to have a new influx of board members or, you know, other board members that may be seasoned that leave. And what we need to make sure that we do, both on this board, within our administration, just like we're supporting any of our teachers, and within our community, is just respect that process and allow for the differences of opinion and still be able to move things forward. And that has become increasingly difficult. And I have personally felt that by giving other members of, of the board that, you know, may not have the, the, the full support or the entire, you know, like, the same communication as the rest of the board, I'm giving them the ability to speak, even if it's not necessarily the, you know, majority opinion that I've personally felt like I've fallen on the outs. So at this point, I, I want to just reiterate that, you know, you've done good things in the district, and despite that, the community isn't hearing that message. And additionally, you weren't always giving us the tools to support your message to the community, and in turn, we end up having a negative relationship with the community. I, I, I just ask that we, like, find ways to either innovate, to address these concerns, and, or, you know, find a way to move forward as a board and superintendent. And if you are able to give us feedback as to how we can build and repair this relationship so that we can continue to move the district forward, as we have discussed in numerous papers here, and that if you decide that you don't want to, you know, be here anymore for whatever reason, then you just honestly be upfront and let us know that. At this time, I would like to open up anything for the members of the board to also weigh in and say what needs to, what you need to say.
Okay, I'll start. This was a tough evaluation. There are so many good things happening with the district, and I think everyone can acknowledge that. That it, it's, it was disheartening to see that it's not taken seriously. We, you know, we do our best to support Brett as we can, and we try to make the best decisions we can make, and we, we spend a lot of time here. We all do. We've, we've all argued with each other over things, and that's what we're supposed to do. And we always come to consensus. So to, to, to sort of have a document with nothing in it, I guess leads to the question of, 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 what do you want? I mean, Damala, you just said it, but we want to help and do the right thing and support, but we need to, it has to be a two-way conversation. We need to know what your path forward is. So I'll leave it at that.
Along the same lines, I, I was disappointed too when I opened up the review and saw nothing populated. I do reviews every year for work. I get that they're kind of not always productive or even helpful or yield anything, but I always end up really excited by looking back on what I've achieved and having that conversation with my manager about what went well. So I always look forward to this point. My first year being on the board, that was one of my favorite meetings, was when we actually celebrated all that success that we had. So disappointing that we are here, because there is a lot to, to celebrate. So we've had success in arts and sports and innovation. We have the pre-K expansion, the blue ribbon recognition, the exchange programs, the SEL programming, even the communications that I believe we've put in place over the past year with the board notes afterwards, the social media, and just various other kinds of communications. To the board, to my trustees, I also say that communication is two ways. You know, there are a lot of words in here about shared responsibility, mutual respect, reciprocal respect. And I think we all need to reflect on how we also talk out in the community and in here and to each other and not let all of the communication issues on the superintendent, because I feel like we could also do better, and we should be reviewing that as well.
Ms. Calviss?
Thank you. So from my perspective, again, I would echo the sentiments that there's a lot to celebrate and a lot of really great things about this district. I don't think it's the what. The question here is the how. And we are a governing body, and I feel like there are times when it just very much feels like there is a tone that is not appreciated when it comes at you. And I think that, I, I guess I've had the experience of, of being in and feeling like there's communication coming my way and reciprocal respect. And I think that there's been examples where perhaps I've witnessed or observed things but didn't have inside information. And then there's, you know, been times when I feel like, okay, this is sort of pointed at me. So having had that experience, I think it just leads me to want to deliver this feedback. I think it's highly unusual to have this kind of conversation in public with an audience, with members of staff listening. As an HR person, I'm used to this being a one-to-one or two-to-one conversation where there's a conversation. And this just feels awkward and weird. And I would so much rather be able to just have an open, honest conversation. an open, honest conversation. But I'm not afforded that opportunity. Dr. Charleston exercised his rights. And I have to respect that. But I also have to say what I have to say, even though there's this whole audience and tons of people who I'm sure value and respect you as they should. But this is the experience that we're having. And I think that's all I wanted to share at this point. Thank you.
Ms. Curry.
Thank you. Hearing all those comments, I do feel like it's an accurate composition, sorry, accurate aggregation of the sentiments that I see and experience. I want to introduce the word stewardship. I think as a board, speaking about us, we're stewards of the community's voice. As a CSA, you're steward, the CSA is a steward of talent. But mutually, we're kind of stewards of a relationship between each other. When I think about the very exciting things that happened in the district, without feedback into this evaluation, it forced the board to reflect really on, like, what are the challenges? Because we had to start from a nearly blank slate thinking on some of the issues that became more of a highlight in the community athletics. There were, call them near misses. I think with shifting over to a hockey team into a different league, other issues with other sports. Those types of issues become problems when there isn't transparent communication on reasons why we should build coalition around topics and issues. I'm pleased following that. I'm pleased that we do have committees or subcommittees. I think that's a better utilization of the time and effort and initiative that this board provides and offers. And without seeing any support of that, the point that we now have subcommittees to a committee of all.
Ad hoc. The ad hoc committees.
The ad hoc committees, yes. I can only deduce from the absence of support that there is not support for that. And I do think that's a critical point of how to take the district and lead the district moving forward, to recognize what is in front of us and how this body is trying to build and support and authorize every action going forward. Thank you.
I just want to echo what the president and the VP said. And I fully support everything that the VP and the president said.
Thank you, Tamale. I too would like to echo everything you said. As somebody who's been on the outside only, it's very difficult for me to make informed decisions in what is the best interest of not only the students but the taxpayers of our town. And an evaluation tool, I think, is a wonderful opportunity to put all of that in there. So obviously, we're not involved with every conversation, but the documentation that can go with it is helpful in understanding, you know, decisions that are made. And without that, it was very, it's very difficult to do evaluation. And I was disappointed that it was not included in this one.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All present members of the board have been able to talk. At this time, Dr. Charleston, I would like to leave it up to you to say whatever you would like to say.
Yeah, I have nothing to say at this time. I'll read the evaluation. I'll provide a response as writing and writing as I deem necessary.
Okay. Noted. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further items on the agenda, I would. I would like to open public comments at 2:53 PM. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes. Mr. Calves, are you able to keep time?
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Carr, 231 Hamilton Avenue. I'd like to read the letter that I wrote to Dr. Robinson on September 24th, 2024. I am writing to formally resign from my position on the Board of Education effective September 23rd. Decision comes after careful consideration, the ongoing challenges that have made it increasingly difficult for me to fulfill my responsibilities effectively. Throughout my tenure, I have consistently sought to advocate for transparency and the concerns of our taxpayers. Unfortunately, I've witnessed a troubling lack of communication and information sharing from both fellow board members and the superintendent. This environment has fostered a significant distrust, hindering my ability to serve the community effectively. Moreover, I feel that my opinions, along with those of other concerned members of the board, have been systemically ignored. This disregard for input from dedicated board members has made collaboration and progress virtually impossible. Lastly, I have experienced a level of mistreatment that I believe is detrimental to my well-being but also to the integrity of the board as a whole. It is disheartening to be part of an organization where constructive dialogue and mutual respect are not prioritized. I hope my departure will lead to a renewed focus on values of transparency, respect, and community engagement that is essential for the success of our school district. And this is what I wrote today. Thank you for addressing his evaluation appropriately, as you just heard of why I had resigned abruptly back in September. I am speaking because the superintendent's recent evaluation needed to address what many of us see and feel every day. Under his leadership, the quality of education in this district is declining, and our schools are suffering because of it. One of the most alarming signs is the rate of teacher attrition. We've seen a steady increase in educators leaving, not just retiring, but walking away out of frustration, burnout, and a lack of support. When our best teachers feel unheard, disrespected, and undervalued, they don't stay. And who suffers most? Our students. This culture starts at the top. The superintendent's pattern of rude and dismissive behavior doesn't just affect meetings. It affects morale, communication, and the stability of our classrooms. Teachers deserve respect and backing, not resistance and dismissal, as well as Board of Education trustees. This is not a personal issue. It's an educational crisis. The board had a duty to acknowledge, and they did, and to hold leadership accountable for the role it plays. Our students, teachers, and family deserve better. I would like to end, that I would like to acknowledge that the board had consensus on this very important issue. And I would like to also thank Dr. Robinson for your strength and wisdom in your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could please state your name, address, and you have three minutes, and I will restart the timer.
Good afternoon. I wasn't planning on speaking. Angela Pucci Bender, Dr. Pucci Bender, 55 Yardley Court. Brett came in with a wonderful opportunity with a board ready to eat right out of his hands. I want to compliment the board now for stepping up and doing the right thing. I made a few notes. The number one cardinal rule. As a former superintendent and as a board member myself, the superintendent should treat all board members the same. That's the number one cardinal rule. He single-handedly divided this board, and it's a shame because the evaluation that you gave today could have been a slam dunk for him. Because when his evaluation fails, it alludes to your staff and your administrators failing. And they don't fail. They haven't failed. He has treated me personally, before I even became a board member, a trustee, disrespectful. And his decorum and his professionalism is outrageous. If he could treat me, a future boss, board member, the way he did, I had no doubt in my mind what was going on behind the scenes as an experienced administrator. I've been in education for over 35 years. I know what his role is. I know what principals' roles are. And I certainly know what staff, their roles are. And they do their job. I thank you for holding him accountable because this has been a long time coming. Dr. Robinson, thank you. I know running this ship could not have been easy. My appreciation to the rest of the board for doing the right thing.
If you could state your name and your address. Yes, I just want to also acknowledge it is, you know, 259. And I know that you said that you were unavailable. After that, you're able to stay for as long as you need and/or we'll just continue on. Okay.
Sanji, 131 Fairmount Avenue. I was also the board member. Chin up. Look at the community. I'm sitting here for 45 minutes. I haven't seen his head up looking at the community. That's very sad. Communication has been a big problem. We raised that before. It's unfortunate. It looks like the history is repeating here. He definitely did some good things. But that's maybe not enough. We handed over the district when we were in the top 10. The ranking has gone down. We have lost some teachers. I think it's time to take the board some tough decisions. It's not an unfortunate time to be here. It's a fortunate time. That's your job to take strong leadership decision. We look up to you to make sure this school district is up and running in the top ranking. That ranking, we deserve that ranking. Take some tough decision and move on. This chapter needs to close. Thank you.
If you're able to, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Sharon Scorpieli, 687 Dreamers Avenue. I wasn't sure if I was going to get up here, but what I would like to say is I would like to thank the board for actually going forward, being honest in this review. You know, last year, when this process happened, kind of, we didn't say anything at the time I was on the board. So I appreciate you moving forward and giving the evaluation in public. What I'm going to plead with you, and if Dr. Charleston was still here, I would plead with him, is that you need to find a way to repair this relationship for all these administrators and central office people sitting here, for every teacher that's watching or is enjoying their summer vacation right now and getting ready for September, for our students. Because this dysfunctional relationship between the board and the superintendent does not help anyone in this district. And I feel for everyone that works in this district to feel, to know that the leadership here isn't functioning right. And so I really, you have to find a way to fix this and move forward and repair it the best you can. So thank you.
If you're able to state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Colleen Manley, 70 Rich Road. You may not believe this, but I don't think well on my feet, you know, and need a little time to absorb. But all I can say is, wow. Kudos to you all. I think, you know, I actually agree. I didn't know a lot of this, I think. But I think the spirit of comments encapsulated a feeling that even if you're not on the board or you can sort of get the sense of. It makes me sad because, as you all know, I've been paying attention for many years. And I know Dr. Charleston to have a ton of strengths. And I also know that for the first three, I don't have an exact time, three to four years, he was very willing to engage, at least with, you know, the HSAs and publicly. And I think he has great ideas. But, yeah, the last few years, it's been like closing down. And I didn't know it was actually as inherent in your operations as you shared or as was just shared. So I hope, I hope you can find a way forward. I'm really shocked at the level of disrespect for not completing his own evaluation. And, you know, I'm really sorry for that. So that's it. And I do commend you because, you know, honestly, we have a district where we have so many opportunities. You guys know this. And wonderful staff and wonderful goals. And this isn't necessary. This isn't productive. And I'm just shocked that a professional at the level of Dr. Charleston would be a part of creating an environment like this. And it is your job to call him on it. But also, hopefully, to be able to work forward. And I'm sorry that he just left. But anyway, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who have any comments? All right. Seeing no additional members of the public, we'll close our public comments at 3:05. And I would like to just say one, you know, last thing. That work really, really hard to keep us focused on purpose. And I would like for that work to continue, just like what you said, Stephanie. Like, we definitely have our own self-evaluation, just like we have the CSA evaluation, which, as you already know, has been sent out and will be discussed prior to our board retreat. The goal with this meeting would have been to have that, you know, bidirectional, you know, level setting, like, where are we at, where can we be, where can we go? And just having this be the second year in a row where it feels like the goal of having the conversation in this manner was for us to not have the conversation. It's just, it is concerning. It is concerning. And it's certainly not meant to be retaliatory. It is not meant to alarm the community or to create division between staff, between staff and board, between staff and administration, between the community and the CSA. That would have not been the goal of the tool. I think that it is kind of clear that by many of the comments that were made, that people did not know that this is what things were like. And it would have been nice to be able to say, you know what, we can work on our things in private. And the community would continue to not know what things were like. And that would have been okay because we were doing our professional duty to work on things behind the scenes so that it didn't have a negative community impact. Because we live here, we love it here. We love that our kids go here. We love our teachers. And we'll continue to love our teachers. So this is an unnecessary element that's added in. I don't have anything else to say at this time. At this point, I would like to have a motion to close the public session. Ms. Carisella, seconded by Ms. Calves. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are closed at 15:07. Thank you.